Actually, I wanted to just tell you real quick about what the Tea Party is, who we are, and we're just a book. In fact, every time I get up here, I'm like trembling because I don't like to get up in front of crowds, but I'm here because I'm afraid for my country. And I love my country, and I'm thinking, you know, my dad used to say, "If you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem." So I figure I'd better get up and start saying something. And so, you know, I come before you with fear and trembling every month, but I just feel like, you know, you've got to stand up. And I believe that you all, at least the majority of you, feel that same way. So the Tea Party, Pickens County Tea Party's mission is to inform, educate, and motivate us to action, okay? Tonight is going to be very, a lot of great information from the candidates. And we don't endorse anyone as a Tea Party, but we want to get all the word out because we believe, you know, we make great decisions, we're telling the people, we get the information, we love our country, we know what to do with it then. Now, the Tea Party, our mission, like I said, is to educate and form and motivate to action the people who share our same core values. Now, what in the world are they? Well, we get our core values from our founding fathers, okay? And they had many principles of liberty that they stood for. And just a few of them, because we picked out four that we feel really say who we are. The Tea Party believes in fiscal responsibility. Wow, what a new concept. The burden of debt is to freedom as subjugation is to conquest. Being in debt is being a slave to a lender. And our country is so incredibly in debt, and we're a slave to foreign countries. And, you know, we just wait for things to even get worse. So common sense tells us this isn't right. It's common sense to be fiscally responsible. We believe in free markets, just as the video was sharing. We believe the highest level of prosperity occurs when there is a free market, economy, and a minimum of government regulations. That means you have the freedom to try, to buy, to sell, sell, and yes, even to fail if you do so. We believe in limited government, just as our founding fathers did. Our founding fathers believed that only limited and carefully defined powers should be delegated to government. And you probably knew this already, but the original draft, the Constitution, was not adopted at first. Well, it wasn't adopted, the original draft, because they felt that there was too much freedom there for the main central government. So they had drawn up the Bill of Rights because they felt that this would be added and there would be no question as to the strictly limited authority that people were transferring or awarding to the central government. And you know, those Bill of Rights are slowly being taken away from us. We're going to wake up one day and be blown away that you have no government rights. I mean, you know, we know that. Or property rights, it's just creeping in. And if we keep staying asleep, we're going to wake up and be totally shocked. So, you know, that's happening, and so we believe in that. We believe that we have the freedom to express our belief in God. A vital principle of liberty the founding fathers vigorously expressed throughout their writings was the foundation of all reality in the existence of a Creator, okay? They believed in a Creator God, and that you would have to answer to Him one day, okay? They believed that the Creator designed all things in the law, and was the law which governed nature. They called that natural law, okay? Our country is, our Constitution is developed under natural law. Well, if you take God out of the equation... Our country was not made for unrighteous and immoral people, okay? So if you take God out of the equation, it's going to fall apart. Well, duh, guess what's out of the equation? You know, kids tremble if they say God's name, you know, say the name of God in the schools, okay? People think they can't pray in public. I mean, people are getting up their rights because they're not practicing their rights, okay? Because even schoolchildren have the right to even pass out tracts, talk about God in the schools that they think they can. So therefore, by not exercising their freedom, it will be taken away. So these are just basic, or four basic core, and there's a lot of other principles of liberty. Those are the four that the Tea Party stands for. And we're excited that you can see these empty chairs around here because next month we want each of you to bring a friend and we'll pack them out. Okay, so now you see their irresponsibility is. Next week, we'll have a full house and standing room meeting, okay? Okay, um, let's see. So I'm going to practice my right to express my religious belief, and I'm going to open a prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord Jesus, we just thank you, praise you so much for the country you've given us, Lord. I thank you for these precious people here. They're here because they care, they want to get information, Lord, they want to make wise decisions. I just pray for a blessing on them, Lord, and I pray for a blessing on each and every candidate here who is bold enough to take a stand and wants to serve, Lord. We know that is not an easy thing to do, Lord, but just thank you for each and every one of them. And I just thank you that you're in the middle of this meeting tonight, Lord. And we just pray that we can restore our nation back to morality, back to natural law, back to honoring our Creator God, Lord, and help us to break the barrier of silence in Jesus' name. Amen. Can I please stand in? Oh, he's up here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of the Lord, the King, and the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
And just real quick, if you want to sign up for our email list, I think there's a sign up sheet out there. You can sign up and send an email. We have a donation jar. If you want to donate any money, we pay for the rent. And also, we're going to have a Constitution Day. We had one last year. If you want to sign up to help, do that out in the lobby. And now, for the main thing of tonight, the only thing of tonight, we're going to have our candidate forum. And I'm going to introduce, just quickly by name, each candidate. And then one of our board members, Kathy Botwell, is going to come up and tell you how the format will be. And I'm only saying by name because the candidates might want to share their background and all that, so I don't repeat what they might want to say. So we'll start on the West Side, hope Stanley isn't hearing, right? So I guess Stanley's not coming. We have Bart Conley, we have Marty Callahan, and Jerry Barnes, Rob Jones, Wesley Weaver, Becky Denny, and Jabel Patterson.
Jabel.
Jabel, I'm sorry. And then we have Kathy Botwell, who is going to come up and share the format for everything. Jabel, right?
All right, I'm Kathy Botwell. I'm on the Board of the Pickens County Tea Party. I'm also on the Board of the Elections. And you noticed our maids over there, and I like that you're all sitting in your side so you can look forward and see what your candidates look like for you. The voters of Pickens County have voted to go from sole commissioner to three-man commission. Sorry, Becky. I mean, three-person. We will be politically correct. All right, they all, they say that all politics is local, and we have the local candidates here tonight running for your District One Commissioner, which would be the West Side of the county. We have District Two Commissioner, the East Side of the county, and then we have Commissioner Chairman at Large, that we will all vote for, one of these two candidates here. You're sitting in a room now divided, and like I mentioned, that you can look forward to see your particular candidates. And I see we have some unsure candidates, people right here, which I thought would be sort of cute to do. If you are unsure, where do you vote?
I'm Yawar County.
Oh, you're Yawar County, okay.
We're not in any state.
We're not in any state, Yawar County, yeah, that's true. That's good. Okay. Now, it's good to gather with our friends, families, and neighbors as we hear from the candidates tonight as to why they want the job and our vote. It's not easy running for public office, so we commend the candidates for doing so. We do commend you because that is a task that you have to take on. We do, don't we? There's word not to fire. Here's the order of events. Due to the number of candidates we have here tonight, I was going to say eight, but I see Stanley's not here, so we have seven. And we'll have up to four minutes. We might have a little leeway on that since we've got less candidates. To tell us about yourselves and why you want to be Commissioner. That will take about, I was going to say 40 minutes, but I'm looking at 10 after. So I'm thinking we might be ready to go here about 20, 30 to 40 minutes. We'll see how it goes. And you will have the option, candidates, to either stay at your desk with those live mics, stand up and talk, or you can come up to your podium here with your notes here, whichever makes you comfortable. Cleve Botwell in the front row here is going to be our time keeper, and he's got his 30 seconds remaining sign. And then time is up sign. So watch him in case you go a little bit lengthy, but we won't cut a little bit leeway today since we've lost one of our candidates right here. I wanted to mention also that Jimmy Swain, who was a candidate, has dropped out of the race. He's here tonight due to health issues, and so we're sorry to see you go. But that leaves two on the East Side, which is Becky and Jerry Patterson. And then we have, actually, we have one, two, three, four, and another one. Help me out here.
Is it the young woman?
No, the lady.
Ms. Bradlos.
Brad, a Democrat. And she could not be here. She said she had vacation plans all set, so we don't have the full slate here, but we have what we have, and we're glad that you're all here. We're going to start with the District One West Side candidates, then we'll go to the District Two candidates, and then we'll end up with the Chairman at Large to have your talk, okay? That's how it's going in that direction. Now, as the candidates give their talks, I'll ask two prepared questions at the end, and that should put us at about close to 8:00. Then after that, we're going to go into the audience and see if we've got some questions from the audience, and I'll be rolling around with the microphone. So be prepared for that if you want to do that. And then the meeting will adjourn at around 8:30 later so that we can mingle and then be out here by 9:00. So let's begin. What we're going to start with is we'll start with Bart Conley, because I'm going to start with the West Side, and we'll tell us about yourself, why you're running for Commissioner, and then we'll go to Marty after that, and here, and then over to the East Side, and then to Commissioner at Large. So watch Cleve for your time, but be a little bit free here tonight because we've got some good time. We're starting here, and I guess that's it, and we'll start with Bart.
Thank you for your introduction. And I'd like to thank everybody for being here today to start off with. I would love to get a crowd of people here, the biggest crowd we've had the last several Tea Party meetings. I'm glad to hear. My name is Bart Conley. I am here on the job interview. I would like to be District One Chairman, or Commissioner. I'm a chairman, you're wrong. Just thinking while I was, you know, but that's four years down the road. But as you heard in the briefly described of one to three-man commission, three-person commission, sorry Becky, we're going to have to get used to that. It's a historic time for this county, and it's something that the people voted on. They wanted to go to the three-person commission. The two district commissioners, the West District and East District, are considered part-time positions. The Commission Chairman is a full-time position, will still be in charge of the day-to-day activities of everything that goes on in Pickens County. The main thing the district chairman will be involved with is policymaking and the budget. And the budget is very important, and I'll point to that a little bit later. I have been married to my wife Cindy. It'll be 38 years this Friday. We have two kids. We have a son who's spent 15 years in the Navy, still in the Navy. He is married and has two children. We have a daughter who is married, has one son, and she lives and works right here in Jasper. I'm going to give my grandson's picture, because this is what I tell everybody. I carry with me, that's my grandson, Alistair. This is why I'm getting into politics. Many of us have been told you always want to leave something better for your kids than what you have it. Well, now with this opportunity, I have a chance to leave something better for not only my children, but my grandchildren. This is a wonderful, wonderful county to live in, to raise your children in. We moved here 12 years ago from Cobb County. At the time, my wife was the ER Director at Mountain Side Hospital, which is where the administration building is now. The conference room used to be her office. She was very fortunate that she was here long enough to help work on the new hospital, to design the operating room, have some input into that. She is now working at a different hospital. She's the Director of Surgical Services. She has seven departments and 75 people who work for her. So I'm very proud of my wife, and she's an angel for putting up with me through 38 years. I retired, Lord, a year ago after spending 11 years as a business representative in Atlanta. And how many people here work in Atlanta and have to travel down that way every day? There's a few. The most enjoyable day of your life will be the day you retire, and you come back at 5:15, and you see that sign that says Pickens County, because you are home and you don't have to go back there. God bless you, Rick, for wanting to keep doing that. I have been active the last several years in the Pickens County GOP. I've been elected to go to several different district conventions. I've been an order delegate to state conventions several times. I'm active in the men's club at our church, Our Lady of the Mountains Roman Catholic Church. I've also, since I don't work in Atlanta anymore and I get home at a decent hour, have been able to do some volunteer coaching through the Pickens County Recreation Department. As far as training, you know, 30 seconds, I'll wrap it up here, please. I'm going to take 10 extra seconds. When I was younger, you know, no one said, you know, I want to be a Commissioner in Pickens County. We all wanted to be cowboys or firemen or whatever. But I went through the Boy Scouts, became an Eagle Scout. One thing I learned through scouting was to be prepared. And I went to college, I got a master's degree in education. Again, it was something to help me learn how to learn. The things that helped me as Commissioner would be being prepared, being able to work with the Commission Chairman, the other district commissioner, to make sure that this county keeps moving forward in a positive manner, that keeps being conservative. And we watch out for the money. Time is up, but the money is the most important thing. You work on the budget, it's the people's money. It's not our money, it's not the government's money, it's your money. I want to thank you again for letting me come here to talk to you. I ask you for your support in the upcoming election. These are my other two candidates I'll be running against. They're both fine individuals, so you guys can have a tough decision, and thank you very much.
My name is Marty Callahan. I'm running for District One Pickens County Commission. I'd like to thank Pickens County Tea Party for hosting this forum and the citizens of Pickens County to help them become more informed about the DUCO and the work we're going to be into. I am 46 years old. I've lived here for 40 years. Six of those years I lived in Rome, Georgia, where I started my State Farm Agency in Fort Kim. I moved back here in 2000. I brought my family back here, and the reason, the biggest reason I moved back was home, but everybody said, "Why don't you live in God's country?" Weird living in God's country. And everybody's, we hear that, say it often, and I still believe that today. I grew up here, lived in Jasper, went to Jasper Elementary School, graduated from Pickens High School in 1983, went to Western Florida College, and as I graduated from college, I started working for State Farm Insurance, as I do today. My family, my mother, Sue Callahan, is here, and my wife, Alana, 23 years married this last Sunday, and my daughter, Claire, and daughter, Amy, they're both new too. Thank y'all for being here. After I got out of school, I came back and started the agency and began my career, and I'm like, you know, this is, this is great. So I got involved, some of my accolades of what I did was several things. A lot of times, a lot of it was service. I mentioned a couple of years of coaching. I'm very proud that I coached recreation for 25 consecutive years, and 10 of those I didn't have the kids above. So that along is a commitment to service. This particular board that I'm playing for will be based on issues and platforms. And a lot of times, I've been going through and talking to people about the election, and we've been talking about where do I vote, who do I vote for? And I think we're finally getting a clear picture of where we've got East and West and one and two, and I think we've got the max to prove that, and I believe that's more, but we need to get down to issues and start talking about it. And the issues of Baptist County, I have a platform, I'll go over in a few minutes, but some more of the accolades. I've been on over 25 years of board experience of counties, city, and school that I've been working on in a volunteer basis. There's, I was the Chamber Commerce Chairman here for five years, I was the Chairman of the Marble Club. I have a lot of local experience. I'm on the downtown development department for here in Jasper. And I think that's one of the biggest issues that we have to move forward in this county is our partnership between our cities and our counties. And I think I'm the person for that job because we have to work together. The cities are important, the counties are important, but they have to work together, and I'm the helping person to do that. Also, I've been a very active member of my church, First Baptist Church in Jasper, as a deacon, and I've been involved in several other organizations. My five-point plan starts with the word right, R-I-G-H-T. The first part of right is R. Do the right thing, do the right thing all the time, be honest, open, show transparency. The I part is identify government, let the government, we need to identify, let people know what government does. People don't want, they expect it to do everything. We have to, we have to let people know what it does more than what anybody wants to know. The G part, grow jobs, 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 jobs. You'll hear that tonight, I'm sure, but commute from Atlanta, over 7,000 people in a recent survey were commuting out of Pickens County for their job. The H part of the right is, the G's, the G part, and the T part of right is to, the T part is to act. We have to lower our corporate taxes, and we have to take care of the money. Then I skipped one, we go back to the H. We have to keep helping our senior citizens, our kids. We don't have our kids, we won't have any. I have an open door policy. I have a website, callahanforproposal.com. Love for you to come visit. I have an open door policy in my business and in my home, and I'd like to talk to anybody about the, about the, we have a lot to have. We get a lot of credit, Tea Party, of the precinct's support of July 31st. We believe in the early voting is the way to go, July 31st, and we'll start. Thank you.
My name is Jerry Barnes. I'd like to announce, first, the District One position as Commissioner. I'd like to thank the Tea Party tonight for their gracious, welcoming, and support of the voice. And I was born to JB and Sue Barnes, October the 9th, I think, 1951. I'm a lifelong citizen of the west end of Pickens County. I married Martha Clark in 1969, and I, we have two children, Sheila and Rob, who works with the Jasper United Methodist Church Preschool, and is a college analyst, and Brian Barnes, who is in Louisville, Kentucky, and she works with Young Foods, and we'll protect her there. I have three grandchildren, Madeline, Ty, and Sophie, who are three months old. Got two brothers, John Barnes and Jack Barnes, they're both retired, location-based, both teachers. John retired for over ten, and Jack for eighteen. I have a sister who lives in Central, she works with the Methodist Church down there and their preschool program. Upon graduation in 1969, I went to work with our family, a large products company. Started out as labor, manager, and ended up being co-owner of a corporation. Stayed there and worked until 1988, Commissioner Bill Point asked me to go and take over the Recreation Department and see if you could get it back on track. I stayed there until that part of, well, March of 1989. I went to work with the Ford Farm Bureau 23 years ago. I'm a retired farm bureau for the 31st of this month, where I can put my full time into this job as a Commissioner. My extensive volunteer efforts in civic organizations involved include the Atlas Academy Association, which we, I helped organize back in 1986. I was the first president, we serviced Pickens, the owner, and Cherokee County. Also, the Pickens County FFA Alumni Association, which was organized in 1983, which I was Board Director, Chairman, in 1983, and I'm currently a board member. The Hen and Volunteer Fire Department, which I'm a charter member of it, was started in 1985. I became the chief of the fire department from 1988 through 1993, I think it was, and from 93 to the present time, I served as Chairman and Board Director for Hen and Barnes Fire Department, which I'm really proud of, but we built a nice fire station there with not one red seven taxman. I'm proud of it. Let's see what else we got. I went through the leadership pickings, it was a charter place in 1989. I served on the jury commission from 1980 to 1988. I served on the USDA Foreign Services Agency as President of Pickens County in 2000, 2006. I run the Hen and Public Precinct for about 28 years, which I can't do that anymore. I'm also on the Fish and Water, Raisin Water, and Sewerage Authority, current, a member of the Hen and United Methodist Church, where I served as Chairman of the Board of Trustees and Fire Department. I'd just like to say that I feel that my extensive volunteer work, my business experience, and my church have given me the fiscal responsibility that I named total responsibility. I look forward to the opportunity to give back to the community that I have, that has had such a profound impact on my life, and which, and would appreciate your support July 31st.
I think you do. I'm the girl in the boys' club. And I would also like to thank Susan and the Tea Party for hosting us. I want to be the first woman to serve on the first three-person Board of Commissioners of Pickens County. And for me personally, it's about service and giving back. I'm a native and a lifelong resident of Pickens County. I was raised in the city of Jasper by my real mom, Ethel Qualls. I attended Pickens County Schools and also attended Ryan Heart College classes at Pickens Tech. I married to David Keller. He is a retired business man. David was president and part owner of L.A.T. Sportswear in Ball Ground, Georgia. L.A.T. employs many Pickens County citizens over the years. David and I have two sons and daughter-in-law and two grandchildren. The Office of Commissioners is very important to our county. They currently have a budget of $19 million, and there are approximately 320 employees countywide. In my mind, the most important questions in choosing your commissioners are these. Do they have good people skills? Could they work well with the other two commissioners? Can they see the big picture? Sometimes take the high road and not sweep the slant stuff? In other words, could the important work of this office move forward and not get bogged down? Can this person make a difference and contribute to the success of this new Board of Commissioners? My personal experiences and business background has prepared me to do these things. Having owned a successful business, Becky Denny State Farm, I know how to make a payroll, balance a budget, and manage people to be as effective as they can be. My background as a businesswoman has taught me to ask the right questions to determine a problem, and then listen, and then go on to help solve the problem. I am prepared to serve many people in many different communities because one person does not make a community, and one community does not make a county. I believe that while everyone is different, and each community in the county has its own special qualities, we are all Pickens County citizens, and we must work together for the good of the county. I am sure that most of you have heard the State Farm slogan, "Like a good neighbor." Well, that was not just a slogan to me. I truly felt that my clients and the people that came into my office for help were my neighbors regardless of where they live, and I treated them as neighbors. I'm a current member and previous board member of the Pickens County Chamber of Commerce. I'm a graduate of Leadership Pickens. I have served on the Board of Good Samaritan Health and Wellness Center, and continue to work tirelessly and fundraise. I have served on the Board of Good Samaritan Health and Wellness Center and continue to work tirelessly and fundraise for this worthwhile organization. Also, I have co-chaired a golf tournament to benefit adult literacy and have volunteered in the adult literacy classroom. I have participated in mentoring at the Pickens County Middle School. I am a Christian. I am a conservative and would spend your money wisely, as I would wear my own money. I strongly support our Second Amendment right to marriage. I also strongly support our individual property rights and I am for less government intrusion. Also, I am for providing economic opportunities for all of our citizens. I feel blessed to have been able to live here and work in my hometown, and I would like to see the youth of our community have that same opportunity. I'm available to discuss any issue with you. In all of my career, I did not screen my phone calls. You can find my cell phone number on my website at beckydenny.com. Lastly, I need your vote and I sure would appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening, I am Jerry Javel Patterson of Canada for the Post Department of God. I'm married to Joey Pearson Patterson, and she's in the audience tonight. We've been married forty-two years now, one son, one daughter-in-law, and three grandchildren. They are the main reason that I'm appointed to this position. I worked for the US Postal Service for thirty-three years. I started out as a subsidiary rule guaranteeer in Jasper Post Office and worked my way through the ranks and served in the county. Several offices as postmaster in charge, as a sheriff, a larys, a bailman in Jasper, Fairmount White. I served as postmaster in Riley, in Alton Rock, Ball Ground, and Blue Ridge. I also served as area manager with sixty-seven postmasters, reporting to me, and they've had five thousand five hundred employees in the area. In two thousand and eight, I was asked to serve on the Supervising Committee of the Land Postal Credit Union. Land Postal Credit Union is a large credit union, its assets were over two billion dollars. I served as internal auditor for that credit union, and I make sure that the money is secured, the funds are saved, and returned as one back to the employees and to the members of the credit union. I'm presently serving as the president of the Georgia branch of the National League of Postal Ministry Retirements. I represent them in conventions all over the country, and I represent them every January to Washington DC before we launch the halls of Congress on postal issues. Hopefully, I'm serving as president of the Atlas of Southwood. I'm seeking the job of Post Department because I believe that I can add a positive, positive perspective to this position. I would really like to see this county prosper. I think to do that, we're going to have to be prudent in our spending and be independent when it comes to making decisions. I think you can work with anyone, but it's got to be for the right reasons, and I think you can't rush things. You have to look at what the issues that you're concerned. Lastly, I just want to thank the Tea Party, thank everyone for their consideration and support. I appreciate your vote on July 31st, or early voting July 31st. Thank you.
Well, good evening. For most of y'all that have not been in Pickens County less than eight years, I'm going to do a quick battle to give you some update on myself and my family. Of course, my name is Rob Jones, I'm running for the chairman of the new commission board that was elected in last year. I have been a resident in Pickens County since nineteen sixty-eight. We moved out in fifty-five, moved back into sixty-eight where I was, did most of my schooling, and done even Florida. We have a wife, Diane, of forty-two years. I'm kind of embarrassed to tell that because you don't want to let that years out that quick. But we have been married forty-two years, I have a son, Chad, and my daughter, Son Lee Jones, Son Lee Dawson, I'm sorry. He has got his wife with him and his son, of course, out and about, but I've got five grandchildren. I've got two that are twelve, two that are nine, and one that's three. So, one that's three pretty well keeps the other ones pretty well in line on that one. But as we go forward, we are going into a new form of government. I have been blessed to be your sole commissioner of Pickens County for the last seven and a half years, which will be eight into this term. As most of y'all know, the term sole commissioner comes about fifty-five years ago from an individual called J.S. Darnell. That was the, J.S., J.S. Darnell, that was the commissioner at that time, it was changed to state government, to sole commissioner in turn. But it has been a blessing, and I want to thank y'all for putting me through the second term, which is the probably first time that has happened over twenty-two years. But as we go into this new form of government, with the District One and District Two, with the chairman and voted at large, there's going to be some learning curves. I am here to hope that your vote will need to help make an easy transition to this form of government. Got a lot of background in that, I have, was a business owner here. My father-in-law ran Bonex Trust, was there since sixty-six, was vice president of operation when I took over with him in seventy-one, seventy-two. We sold the company in ninety-five. From that going on, I went back into private business, through a couple of big companies here in town. But my background is extensive, I went to college, after we sold the company, I was able to work on my degree. Also, I worked about thirteen years free, drove two times a week to Berry College, Hop School, and their Recreation Department over there, had some break time over there. And of course, I'm a deacon of Ball Creek Baptist Church. I was ordained a deacon of that church back in nineteen seventy-six, which is a little country Baptist church on one thirty-six before it crossed the line and went into Murray County. But for the future Pickens County, working on quite a few issues, but the two, two main issues we've got is water for the citizens. We have got to keep building our infrastructure on water and the water lines, but it's also bringing us over into park protection. We have got, we started, it's two and a half years ago, we started using a paid fire staff. We've got fifteen individuals now that are paid firefighters for Pickens County. Station eleven here at the airport, and Station five, we're on Randy Road across from Ben Tree Drive, with the two full-time, twenty-four-hour day fire stations, along with ambulance services that are in there. We have now stepped it up on the infrastructure, so we have four full-time ambulances for Pickens County. They are all full wheel drive units, and we keep two backup units on top of that. As well as behind Station eleven, we're running a air ambulance service that we worked a contract out. We have done an air ambulance station here behind Station eleven. But as we go forward, wound up forming a water authority, called Pusso Watti Water Authority, which is a group of four of the three of the counties besides Pickens. I am now the chairman of that organization, and we're hoping that soon as the water wars for the state of Florida, Georgia, and Alabama get cleared up, we'll be able to put a straw, hopefully, in part of the lake for a group up between the four counties to kind of cut the expenses, plus on cost of treatment plants and our infrastructure. Thirty seconds. We have got, we have worked hard to get our main water lines to all four areas of the county, north, south, east, and west, where we can tie and partner with the counties. And then we're also working hard to upgrade our road system, as well as to maintain our ability to fight hard for Pickens County, keep the ISO rates low. Since we've got two insurance people sitting on the waiting list positions, I'm sure they're very concerned about the ISO rate for the people of Pickens County, which most of them know we're getting trying to bring it down. But again, I hope y'all would consider me for the chairman of this board. We have kept the mill rate the same for the last three years at six point two six, and we will try hard to do that for the future. But thank you very much, and have a good evening.
My name is Wesley Weaver, and I'm running for a commissioner again for Rob Jones. I too want to thank the Tea Party, but I want to thank them by focusing direct on the issues I've been given this opportunity to talk. And I want to address all the issues as I said in the beginning. I don't even know why Rob Jones is standing up in front of you here tonight. Number one, Rob Jones promised that if a multi-member commission wasn't active, he wouldn't be seeking reelection. And once he did, he said that next time he'd run the Tea Party. I've never seen Rob Jones in a single Tea Party meeting, other elected officials tripled his attendance. Why does I, why does he not come? I question whether Rob Jones is really a Republican at all. Everyone in the Tea Party is familiar with the term Rhino, Republican in name only. Rob Jones is a Rhino, ladies and gentlemen. When he goes and qualifies to run tomorrow over here at the new Board of Elections office, I think he should just sign up and run on the Democratic ticket. I know one claim for certain, Rob Jones is anything but conservative. True principles of the Republican Party, the true principles of conservatism are based on the idea of small government. Government that stays out of the way and out of the lives of its productive citizens. Government that respects and fears the individual, and respects an individual's constitution and protected property rights. Government that imposes as little tax as possible, and government that conserves the money it has and does not waste the money it does not. For the past eight years, our sole commissioner has been anything but conservative. Is it in keeping with the idea of small government to triple the size of the county's government? Mr. Jones responds with a brilliant on the ballot. What? Well, that's what's been done, the size of government has tripled. Is it conservative, and directs your attention to the courthouse across the street over here? Is it conservative to spend seventeen point one million dollars to remodel the existing courthouse? Is it conservative to spend seven hundred thousand on the old hospital, when it was offered to the previous commissioner a few months earlier for four hundred thousand? To buy the old hospital, Rob Jones sold the old federal building, the post office, and the sidebar restaurant located next to the courthouse. Now, because he is demolishing the old courthouse, the county is renting the old post office. The building got owned only several years ago. Now, the county is paying six thousand dollars a month in rent to rent that for at least twenty-four months. Not only is that clearly non-conservative, that is plenty poor management of the citizens, this county's hard-earned tax dollars. The sidebar restaurant, the other building Rob Jones sold, is a beautiful building, I don't want to hang any view, there were eight power lines in business. Had beautiful stained glass windows on the inside, would have made a perfect courtroom, in fact, it would have made several perfect courtrooms. The grade behind the pivot wheel, that's where they want to park courthouse cars. People parking in the lot are going to be on hold, having to walk up the hill to get to the courthouse. The problem is, there's railroad tracks there. Mr. Jones is proposing to build a covered bridge over five-foot-long railroad tracks, and let this covered walking path cost the citizens of this county. Not only not conservative, but also a complete waste of money, no common sense. Recently, when I was telling someone about the courthouse debacle, someone accused me of not having a sense of history. That Mr. Jones, they argued, was preserving the courthouse. Well, let me tell you, I have a strong sense of history, a sense of history that remembers back to April twenty-eighth, two thousand and eight, when men from painstaking average the late Nene Joe Beller Hill of the Marble Valley Historical Society, got our courthouse listed in the National Register for its historic significance. What does Commissioner Jones immediately do? He puts the courthouse up for demolition. The courthouse now does not even have a front door, if y'all drive by, please notice that. It has been rigged in and turned into a window. Where's the sense of history in that? He took the historic entryway of the historic courthouse and walked in. Had it been left alone, the site would have been eligible for more rehabilitation tax incentives and grants. If the new courthouse had to be built, which I'm not sure it did, then why not build a new building? Save money on renting the old buildings the county used to own and continue to use the existing courthouse until a new courthouse was completed. The courthouse, a marble building, could have been used for any number of purposes. Could be used for a marble museum during the Georgia Marble Fest, would have been a great place to have tourists come and visit. It could have been sold to City Hall, City Hall would have been well-served by having a City Hall right on Main Street. Let me tell you about the community center. He bragged about the new community center he built, it cost like one point eight five million dollars. One week after its completion, the roof started leaking so bad that a contractor had to be brought in and work eight solid weeks before the leaks were fixed. Is this something we can look forward to with the new seventeen million dollar courthouse? I was certainly holding on. The community center is nothing more than two basketball courts. What the county wanted was a place where kids could do activities and have entertainment for the citizens. Now, after paying one point eight five million in taxes, if you want to use rooms at the center, you have to pay hefty in order to rent them. Definitely not conservative. My time's up, but I would really appreciate questions so I can continue giving information.
Okay, we have quite a few different people here tonight, and I think that they're all great candidates. The volume? Okay. I would say that there's quite a choice here, as we all like to see, different flavors for different folks. And we've got the west, the east side, and all ideas about, let's go ahead, and I've got two prepared questions. And I'm debating how to do this, so I'm going to go down the line, and I'm going to start over here with Jerry Anderson. So, what is your number one primary issue for Pickens County, and what is your solution?
Primary issue is to keep the taxes where they're at, or reduce the taxes, keep the village rates the same, and try to capitalize on better service than what we have without a tax increase. I think we can do that by smart budget, we can do that by working together.
All right, same question, Becky. The number one issue for Pickens, and what is your solution to that?
I think the number one issue is water and jobs, they go together. Eventually, I think we want to have our own independent water system and not be purchasing it. And with jobs will come a bit more growth and more opportunities for our people.
Wesley, same question. Number one issue, and what is your solution?
There's a new book called End Spending, that's what we need to do. Lower taxes. Here's the paper from last week. Commissioner Sees Tax High Impossible Due to Multimember Expenses and Falling Property Values. With the new multiman commission, it will solve as being relatively no additional costs. Promises broken, need to lower taxes and end spending.
All right, Rob, I know you mentioned a concern of yours, but you want to elaborate on that. Your number one concern for Pickens, and your solution to it.
Well, that number one issue, but it seems like my point here has gotten us pointed different direction, that's fine, he will learn as age progresses. But the number one issue here is the infrastructure of Pickens County, water and fire is one of the major concerns as we grow into the future. In order to keep, keep your taxes low and keep your bills coming in so higher, I get so ready with the insurance, with fire protection, along with water, that goes along with it. It's normally some of your main, main concerns we've got for the future of Pickens County.
Good, thanks. I will go to you, Jerry.
Okay, the main thing I'd like to leave here of Pickens County is jobs. When you get fifty-two percent of the people traveling down the road every day, they're not spending money here, they're spending down the road. We've seen businesses go under, one of the main ones, Lawson Sherwood, bought my first vehicle back in nineteen sixty-nine. And it hurts you to see people like that just go under. But it's going to take jobs here in the county. We don't, big companies come in, you need a bunch of small companies. If you get one big company to go down, you're hurt. But we need to be jobs here, get the people working here, buying here, and keep the tax money in Pickens County.
Thank you. I want to go to you. Number one problem, and what's your solution?
Number one is, just like everybody says, it's like loving red, water will create jobs, lower the fire department rates. Water is a big source of need, but the jobs, I believe, is the biggest issue, and the money spending goes out, it's definitely a problem. You can't, we can't compete to cater to our plants like it has. We can't compete with the plants, we don't have the water resources. I've worked on several economic development initiatives to try to get jobs, we cannot compete, we don't have the resources. We've got to go to the small, two, three, five, and six employees and ask them, how do you create jobs? We need to create two this year, how do you need to do that? We need to go to them and ask them. We don't need to get a five-hundred employee chicken plant, we don't have the water, we can't compete with those plants, we have to bring resources and jobs.
Good, Byrne.
Everybody's brought up some good ideas, I believe jobs are very important, but to me, it's the budget. Right now, we're almost ending, our budget's nineteen million dollars for this county, that's nineteen million dollars of your money. And as a new board, we're going to have to make sure that we spend it wisely. You spend it on things like improvement in roads, you spend it on things like increasing the climate to let companies come in here, keep a very positive climate for growth. You spend it on things like increasing the climate to let companies come in here, keep a very positive climate for growth. But it's keeping that budget as conservative as possible, spending people's money as wisely as possible is a very important thing to me. Thank you.
Stay standing. Marge, you're about to get this, the first question, aren't you? Where do you see Pickens County twenty years from now?
I was asked that before, and I was caught a little off-guard, but in twenty years from now, I see myself sitting on a rocking chair in an urinating home.
Don't talk about you, Marge.
I'll explain the county, and I'm hoping one of my kids, I'm hoping one of my kids will come and pick me up and take me out today. In downtown Pickens, right downtown Jasper, where every business is occupied. Every store has a business in it, and people from Pickens County working in it. I look for our population. Right now, we're a little over thirty thousand. And I've seen census figures, they're saying we'll be sixty thousand in twenty years. I think we'll be about forty-five thousand. There'll be people moving into this county, but more so, there'll be our children staying here because we have created the county. We've kept the county going. This is already a great county to live in, to raise your kids in, to go to school with. We're gonna keep it that way, and our population's gonna grow. Our water is gonna be a little better in twenty years from now. But if we started building reservoirs right now or even applying to build a reservoir for this county, it'd be twenty years probably due to government red tape before we start construction. It's gonna take a long time, but something needs to be looked at. We need to look at it now, so the twenty years we have with water, we need. And I'm gonna, before your husband holds up the sign... I'm gonna sit on it and watch it happen.
All right. Marty, where do you see Pickens County twenty years from now?
For twenty years, I think guys in the public will be retired, but I'll still be on the board. Nine forty-six, again, I'll make that again. I'm young and I'm ready, and I think that's important for this. I think I've got a lot of good experience, and I'm gonna be around for a long time. In twenty years from now, we'll have reservoirs, we'll have five percent unemployment, and we'll still live in the greatest county in Georgia. Because we do that now. Don't try to change it. We have a good place now. In the blue building, we go.
I hope I ain't that close to being done morning. But I think it'd be a lot like it is now, if we keep everything under control, the roads regulated, get jobs in here where people can move in these houses and rebate all these foreclosures sitting around, not bringing anything into the county. But that's my opinion.
Okay. Rob, twenty years from now, where do you see Pickens County?
Twenty years from now, most of us in here, I hope, remember back in nineteen ninety in Pickens County. We remember how the growth was at that time. I'm predicting probably in twenty years, and I can see much more, much more growth in twenty years than you have in twenty-ten, twenty-eleven. We're supposed to be at thirty-three thousand people in Pickens County, we're at twenty-nine thousand, six hundred. That's what the growth rate is right now. Actually, the unemployment rate for Pickens County is eight point three, we're the lowest in the region. So that is starting to drop off a little bit. But you're gonna still see the mom-and-pop shops come in, you're gonna see the family businesses. We are not a county that's gonna have Kia plant here. That's not gonna happen. We're gonna have industries such as Lexon and Slater, it's gonna work about three, four hundred people. We're gonna have hopefully, in the future, in the near future, probably somebody going into the shoe plant area, what we used to call the old shoe plant. We have been working, we've got a company that's looking at going into another piece of property up there by the shoe plant. And then we've worked hard in the last two years to set up some enterprise opportunities on the Pickens County, which are areas that are designated by the state where companies can't come in without a detriment to the citizens of the county for their tax base. But the tax refund they get is coming from the state. They actually get two, twenty-five hundred dollars per employee coming off the, coming off the state, off the income tax, those businesses coming in. But those are places you're gonna see for the future of Pickens County. A lot of people are gonna start working at home. A lot of people are working at home now. I think that's gonna get easier in twenty years. Everybody's gonna be working off the computer, not traveling much. And we're gonna be, for lack of a better term, lack of level. We're gonna be a better computer. That's what we're gonna be. Our school system is not growing that big. The population rate on our school, on our children going into schools, they've kind of left it off. You're gonna see that as much go on as those elections start coming about. But it's gonna be interesting to see what happens in twenty years, but I didn't, that's what's gonna happen, knowing what happened in nineteen ninety and according to experience so far.
Okay, thank you. Wesley? How do you see Pickens County twenty years from now?
Mr. Jones made this statement that with years, I would want to gain experience. I don't know if he's criticizing my optimism, but I don't just see Pickens County continuing to be a better community. This needs to be a place where we create jobs. Twenty years ago, there was a mayor in the city of Jefferson, over in Jackson County. And people thought he was crazy. He laid, he was laying water pipes. And he was laying out, marking out roads through county-owned property. And they thought he was crazy for doing that. They didn't realize that he had the foresight to prepare infrastructure that would attract new businesses. The same way the Chamber of Commerce has an Economic Development Council. Gary Necton, in particular, that goes out and seeks business to come here. The county needs a counterpart to that. We need somebody to advertise Pickens County. What I'm aiming for is, because I would like to see every kid who graduated from Pickens High School who goes off to college, come back, and I would like to see a job waiting for every one of them. Everyone, every young adult who wants to make a life here. It's pessimistic to say that we're not gonna have any growth in the future. Growth will come. We don't need to be pro-growth or anti-growth, we just need to be prepared for growth. But if we want to increase jobs, we need to attract businesses to come here. The only way to make that happen, to make jobs happen, is to create an atmosphere that welcomes new business. Give tax incentives to business. Mr. Jones said, "Oh, it's the state's problem to give tax incentives to companies that locate in the state of Georgia." Why not do the same thing in Pickens? Think, think what a good investment it would be to give the tax incentives to businesses that come here instead of building seventeen million-dollar courthouses. With seventeen million dollars, this week in the paper, in addition to saying, "Your taxes would be raised", Mr. Jones also said that it costs seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars to pave one mile of road. It listed, there's four hundred paved miles of road in the county and one hundred and seven unpaid miles. Well, what can you do with seventeen million dollars?
Wesley, we're talking about future here, so let's go in that direction, okay? And Mary, up to you.
For the future, we need to pave roads. These one hundred miles of unpaid roads, you can pave them twice and still have a million dollars left over. For the paved roads, you can pave half of those. We need to have roads and more water. We need to build an infrastructure to get businesses to locate here. And Mr. Jones is anti-growth. When he ran reelection in two thousand and four, there was a business, Leon Bridges Development. He wanted to develop a subdivision on Parker Road. Mr. Jones campaigned against that. He said he was not gonna have that. There's gonna be a moratorium on that.
Okay, Wesley. I'll tell you what we're gonna do. I want some future answers, and I think we're gonna have Rob Jones be able to answer some of your charges. So let me go to Becky. I wanna go ahead.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Okay. Becky, I wanna know what you think Pickens County is gonna look like in twenty years from now.
Okay. I feel pretty positive and optimistic about Pickens County. I think we will see tremendous growth. I think we will start addressing the infrastructure and water situation. It could take a few years, but you have to start somewhere. So I just see all positive things for the county.
Okay, good, Becky. All right. Jared, number three.
In twenty years, none of us really know what the future will hold. But if we work, if we plan right, if we do the infrastructure right, we may have to take a reservoir, one of the mini dams around the county, buy it, increase the size of the dam, increase the water, do what we need to to draw the industry. I've got three grandchildren that'll be growing up here. In twenty years, they'll all be adults. I'd like to see all of them come back here. And that will be my goal, is to make the county a place that I want to come back to.
Okay, thank you. You know, we have one incumbent up here, and that's Rob Jones. We can't go after any of them because they've not done the job yet. But I'm gonna give Rob an opportunity to address anything that was brought up tonight. Do you have anything to say?
Let me refresh everybody's memory. Back in two thousand eight, we voted, as taxpayers of Pickens County, voted on a splot. The splot in that vote was, we had three plans for the courthouse. In the open meetings that we had for that area of the courthouse, it was voted on to keep the courthouse in town, not to drive business out of downtown Jasper. That was, in that vote, not only was the courthouse, but was for the recreation center, was to share the partnership with the city of Jasper, talking, rocking, nuts with the funds. If everybody remembers in two thousand eight, it wasn't my plan, it was y'all's plan. We had three meetings, open meetings around the county to form the splot, what was voted on. That splot was voted on for approximately thirty-three million dollars. Now, by state law, which my opponent here is a lawyer, he should know state law. By state law, the splot was voted in by the taxpayers. That money is dedicated to those projects. Granted, there was seventeen point two billion set aside for the courthouse project. The courthouse project was not only the courthouse, but if y'all remember, it's for a parking facility, a parking area, and cleaning up around the outskirts of the courthouse that's in town. The bids have come in on the courthouse, nine point eight billion dollars. So now we are under budget on the courthouse. Time to get the parking lot done, time to get the roads done around the courthouse, we're gonna be spending approximately eleven billion dollars. The recreation department, they're stopping that community center. Yes, the building, we have never, the contractor, we still owe the contractor a hundred thousand dollars because he did have some issues with the roof, and I would not exempt him as that. So he has to spend his own money. It took him about six weeks to get a different contract from here because when we signed the contract for that recreation center, I set it up probably on a twenty to thirty-year warranty on the roof of that building. That roof did not meet up to that warranty by the warranty company. So the contractor then had to go back and redo that roof on his own expense. I'm still holding a hundred thousand dollars that I owe that contractor until he just had the job done and meets the contract which we were signing. Now, that's what's going on with those areas there. The roads, I know is an issue, but as everybody knows, two thousand, two thousand eight, when I first took off in oh-five, we did a transportation study. The transportation study helped Pickens County, we were getting approximately five hundred thousand dollars a year for the DOT. When we did the transportation study, that automatically put us in line for another five hundred thousand dollars. So in oh-six, oh-seven, and first of oh-eight, we had a million dollars to play with from the George Department of Transportation. That money was used, if y'all remember. And this is on the Pickens County website, pickenscounty.gov. It is listed all the way back to oh-five, the roads that were paved, the name of the roads that were paved, and where the roads are at, whether on the west side or the east side. That is listed on the website all the way up to two thousand and ten. Also on that website is the amount of water lines that was installed from two thousand and five to two thousand and eleven. And those projects are still going on. That's on that same website. Please bring it up, look at it. It's facts.
Okay, thank you. Rob? All right. Next. Five hundred and eighty, good timing, so we're doing great. I'm gonna go ahead and go into the audience. If there's anyone that has some questions, raise your hand. And let's see what we can do to just have some questions to our candidates, and you can address them all, or individually?
Well, it concerns downtown. I'm a resident here, and I've been here for twenty-five-plus years. And I say downtown, full and happy and busy, and now it's a ghost town. And I'd like to know, I guess as I future, so I'm in Commissioner of Jasper, it would be one of your two, one of you would be responsible for developing downtown, is that correct? It falls under your venue? So that would be the main... Well, then I'll withdraw my question.
In regard, in regard to a statement that was made earlier by a gentleman by the name of Jerry Necrotal. He is hired by the city of Jasper. But what wasn't told was when Mr. Larry Conery retired back in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, I took his budget and partnered with the city of Jasper to hire Jerry Necrotal as a joint economic development director of Pickens County and the city of Jasper together. Henceforth, we are partners in that development. And that's what we're doing to help the downtown area and try to keep the downtown area vibrant for the future, for the future accent of Pickens County. When y'all moved in here, most of y'all are not natives here, and I agree with that. But when y'all moved in here, you moved in here for the ambiance that we've got in this community. Last thing you want is for us to start changing the majority of the building structures, the essence of what you moved in here for, to enjoy life in Pickens County.
Okay. We've got some more questions coming up here. I'm gonna go to Marge. All right, which candidate?
I don't need that. Rob, I want you to get together with the mayor and pass an ordinance keeping all the attorneys off of Main Street because they're taking up all the business. I mean, we're running out of stores because it's filling up with attorneys. And I'm kidding. I appreciate the job that's done with the water and everything because ISO rating has dropped and our insurance is a lot cheaper. With regard, I hear different people talk about the reservoir. Well, I wouldn't have been here for fourteen, fifteen years. I mean, sixteen years. But anyway, I don't know how we would fill a reservoir because we don't have the water sources. I mean, I, I mean, I hear people talking about, whoa, we need a reservoir. We have Carter's Lake, and, but, I mean, that's it. And then we have, we have the Marble Line, that's a natural reservoir, fills up. But I mean, as far as, we don't have any rivers that go through Pickens County, so I don't know how we can build a reservoir. Where are we gonna get the water?
Kathy, can I answer that?
Yes, go ahead, just to answer how we get that water.
You're, you're correct. We do not have a major river coming through Pickens County. If we was to decide tomorrow to build a reservoir in Pickens County, it's gonna take eighteen years. Just before we can break around, you've got DNR and EBT to deal with, you've got environmental studies have to deal with, and then once you ever clear the property, now you've got the money you're gonna come up and build a reservoir. Right now, it costs you, right now, with today's money, it costs you four dollars and fifty cents a gallon to build a reservoir. So do the math. The purpose of forming the Duselaw Teak Water and Sewer Authority with the other three counties was the fact that as these water wars get done, Carter's Lake was built and designed for thirteen million gallons a day withdrawn. That lake was designed for that. So Murray County, the city of Jasper, was able to put in permits to go ahead and pull two million gallons out of that lake. Soon as they did that, of course, Corps of Engineers cut everything off, stopped on account of water wars. Those are slowly coming to an end. So when that's, when that happens, there's gonna be eleven million gallons a day for somebody to pull. That's why we formed this Duselaw Teak Regional Sewer and Water Authority, to pull the water out of Carter's Lake that's already built. And we have already, as a group of counties, Gilbert, Pickens, Murray, and the city of Calhoun, have already got infrastructure lines closed to Carter's Lake to build us a partnership with a treatment facility for that, for the future. Right now, we've got a contract with the city of Calhoun. We can pull one and a half million gallons a day from Calhoun. We are partnering, for lack of a better term, with Big Canoe where in case of emergency situation, we can supply that water, or they can supply Pickens County water. That's fixing to happen before the year's end. We have approached bed free. They have already got the reservoirs there, and knowing what you've got as water service delivery areas inside Pickens County can utilize. But those, those are for the future and not in the near future. That could happen in Pickens County.
All right, thank you, Rob. It sounds like water is a big problem here. What would your solution be? Go ahead, Nancy.
I moved to Pickens County about four years ago. And I moved here for medical reasons, but also because it reminds me of where I grew up, which is a small town with that ambiance that everyone's talking about. The first thing I encountered was to make it my business to find out what was happening in my community. So I went to city council meetings, I went to commissioner meetings, I went to every meeting I could find, board of education, anything else. What I continued to hear was, whether it was the commission or the city, money is our problem. I had run into several times getting the city and the county to even agree what is in the city and what is in the county. I lived right off of Bell Street. One side of it is the county, one side... One side of it is the county, one side of it is the city. Try to get something done. My question really is, why do we have to have two huge budgets in our county if money is one of your primary concerns? I don't want Jasper to lose its identity, which the mayor seems to think, and I don't want Pickens to just consume everything. But why can't we work together to accomplish? It doesn't always look like that's happening. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's my question.
All right, let me point this out. I, I think Rob is the only one who can answer these questions. We've got people that are unfamiliar with their jobs, because they're, it's brand-new jobs. So Rob, I guess it's your question.
Well, I almost got the target on his back, so I'll wait for that. By state law, a road, if the city owns the property on one side, it's county on the other, the road actually belongs to the county. Now, until the city has property on both sides of the road, then it's automatically turned over to, to a city, what city of Jasper, city of East Bay. Granted, to the fact that where you live at, that road is actually a boundary of the city limits and parts of property that have been annexed over the years, that's what's called spoke annexation. That's the issue that you had. The state, as of about seven years ago, dealt with the issue of spoke annexation. And as much of y'all know, there's 15 miles of 515 in Pickens County. Out of that 15 miles, City of Jasper's got 13 miles of it. So that's what we've been dealing with for the last, actually for the last 18 years. But those are issues that we're slowly coming to grips with. Now, in the, if you get on the Pickens County website, you see where Pickens County has partnered with the city of Jasper to pave some roads in the city to help the city's budget, because their money's coming from the DOT is, has dropped just like everybody else has. But with county owning its equipment, the city willing to buy the asphalt. We partner, and we have paved roads outside the city. That's also on that website, if y'all want to take a look.
Okay. Questions? I see, okay. I'd like to ask everyone how they feel about this character zoning. And I don't know which one you want to start with. You want to ask everyone about this character study?
Zoning.
Zoning.
Characterization, Yellow Creek Project.
Yeah, the yellow.
Yellow Creek, the one that was a big uproar. Okay. Andy, that's a good question. Starting down here real quick, are you familiar with that? When they had that character study out there in Yellow Creek? What are your thoughts on that?
I'm already familiar with one I've read in the paper. But from what I understand, if you live in Yellow Creek, you need to decide how your property is zoned. If I live on West End County on Watson Lake Road, I don't need to decide how your land is going to be zoned. That's up to you.
All right. Marty, do you have any thoughts on that?
It's a bigger issue than that.
Right, and they don't want to ask you the west side.
But it's not, it's a county issue. We, zoning is very important. It's a lot bigger issue, but where do you live today? Wherever community you're in today. It was a big issue when it was Yellow Creek back in January. But think about where you are now. Do you want the state telling you that you can park so many cars on your road, in your driveway? Do you want the state telling you to paint the color of house? Do you want the color, to tell you the color you have to? That's fine if you do that. You don't get involved, because that's what they're trying to do.
Okay, now Jerry, you can answer her now, since you're on the west side. Go ahead.
Well, I'm on the west side, but I think according to the Department of Transportation, they're playing them roundabouts for the wild talking rock, the four-way stop at Tate. And it's something that's going to concern all of us. And I think, like I said, I think the people needs to make it.
Okay. Kathy, do you have any thoughts on that? Is that side of you? I think so, go ahead.
Well, I think it was handled poorly, to be honest, from what I understand. I think that if citizens had been asked if that was something they were interested in, that's one thing. And if they came to me and said, I mean, I've heard about this character planning, and I'm interested in it, I would fight for them to have it. But from my understanding, somebody just bared a head with this, and citizens were not asked and were not given any input. And I just felt horrible about that for those citizens.
Okay. Jerry, do you have an opinion on that?
I do. On character zoning, I don't think someone should force anything on another. I think we should have our own zoning in the county without the state being involved, as Jerry alluded to. Roundabouts seem to be the trend. I know, I've heard that they're on the board for Steve Tate 53, Yellow Creek 53, and the four-way at Tate, and I totally opposed to it.
Okay. How about the two chairman candidates here? Do you have an opinion on the Yellow Creek? Go ahead, Marty.
I'd like to take the podium, if that's all right.
Oh, goodness. Well, we're going to limit you a little here, so watch, because I do keep track.
Yes, man. Let me give you a little bit of history. I'm sorry, what was that? Let me, let me give you a little bit of history about the character areas. Brock Jones appointed a man named Phil Anderson to the zoning board. Mr. Anderson was the head of the CAC, the advisory committee, that proposed the change to the multi-m mandate commission for our government. And his next act of business was to propose the character area change, changing the east side of the county. This plan included architectural controls, that you have to build your house out of the same material and paint similar colors. You have to have signage requirements. Signs in your yard would have to be of a certain height and a certain appearance. All, all new development, including new residences and new businesses, would have to have parking in the rear. And Mr. Jones is going to get up here and tell you that this was all Phil Anderson, and Phil Anderson has since resigned from the board. Well, Brock Jones appointed Phil Anderson to the board, and I personally conveyed my desire that Mr. Jones terminated him from the board after everybody in Yellow Creek showed their displeasure with this. He didn't, he said he didn't have the authority. From my understanding, all, all personnel served at the discretion of the commissioner, and he has the power to fire them. This is not just a east end of the county issue. This is an entire county issue. Yellow Creek was the first of 17 proposed character areas for the city. In the city of Jasper, the proposed character area was to bury all the electrical lines in the city of Jasper. How much will that cost? The, in Jerusalem, the west end of county, hint, all these character areas were laid out. The, the west side of the county is happy with its agricultural heritage and its family farming way of life, and it doesn't need to be changed by special interest. We need to have somebody who's working for the public interest, not private interest. Private interest who wants to change the appearance of the county.
West Side.
Anybody that lives in subdivision, that's fine. I don't live in subdivision. I, I want to have yard sales in my yard if I want to. I want to paint my house whatever color I want to. And I want to have a sign in my yard if I want to. I'm against the character areas. Mr. Jones appointed a man that was pushing the character area.
Okay. Rob, you can answer that.
I'll make it quick.
Okay.
Let me, let me give you some quick updates. DCA, when they come in, they come in every five years, every 10 years, they do a major study of all the counties in the state. Back in 2002, 2003, they come up with this plan that as they go around the county, eight counties, they get the communities to come in, and everybody put their input in. They've come up, previous administration, with these character areas. They're called character areas. And all that is, is for a community to define what their character areas, such as Tate's a character area. Their character is the marble industry. Hinton's a character area, and Blaine, their, their claim of fame is trade technology. That's what a character area is. There's nothing in the law that says that a county or a city has to go and impose any kind of regulations in a character area. It's just to identify that on a map. And we all have to do DCA, or we don't get loans from the state government through DCA. DCA cuts us off, because we haven't done a, a study for Pickens County, Gilbert County, no matter what it is, you're cut off from loans. All that is is a study. On the other hand, Mr. Anderson did sit on the pain in development board. Unbeknownst to me, he decided to take this on himself and do his own survey. When I first found out about it, he'd come into my office, laid a group of papers on my desk, and told me to sign this. And I said, I'm not signing anything till I read it. What it was, he had already bypassed the government of Pickens County, called DCA, and had them agree to the fact that they will come in and do a study of the Yellow Creek area. I refused, I shut him down. Y'all had your meeting, and I figured it would happen that way. And it was good for him to understand how the community feels. Granted, there were some tempers that flared. But on the other hand, he did resign the next day. He didn't have much choice, but he did resign the next day. And that's all I'm going to say to that. I do not have the ability to fire somebody that sets on me authority, unless there's a malfeasance. You being an attorney should know that. So I'm just going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I see some arms coming up here. Listen, I'm over here, I'll be right to you. Maybe two more questions, we're getting close to eight thirty.
I, I'd like to change the subject a little bit. Rob, we've got a T-splosh coming up. Another big vote, and there's a lot of confusion about that. Could you shed some light on the T-splosh? The T-splosh, as everybody knows, is the transportation act that they're trying to oppose throughout the state. The state in the last, in the last six to seven years has consolidated a bunch of north, a bunch of regional commissions, which now we are down to 12 regional commissions throughout the state. You've got your ARC, which is the Atlanta Regional Commission, you've got the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission, you've got the Blue Regional, now the Regional Commission. So there's 12 of them throughout the state. I said that to say this, the transport, the, the T-splosh, along with DCA, and now the Chamber of Commerce getting involved in it, are trying to pass a one-cent sales tax to help promote the revitalization of all roads in the state of Georgia. Now, this can take 20 minutes, and I'll try to cut it as close as I can. So if you guys got any questions after the meeting, I'll go into depth on. But what that boils down to is they have said, okay, we've got, for instance, our Northwest Georgia RC, there's 15 counties in that, and we're part of that 15-county RC. If we vote, if our regional RC votes to go with a one-cent sales tax, then they claim we're going to get somewhere, Pickens County is going to get somewhere around $60 million in 10 years. And I, and they base that on the fact that when you do a regular splosh, a five-years splosh, you get $30 million for five years. So in 10 years, you get $60 million. That handles all 15 counties. Of course, they'll, they'll get their own monies on that one. What's happened to Pickens County is the, the jobs, not the jobs, the constructions that they want to do in roads in Pickens County comes up to a total of $45 million for 10 years. We're going to be paying $60 million for 10 years. So that makes Pickens County a donor county. We have had that going on throughout the state. Henceforth, the only counties that are really interested in this money is the cabin in Gwinnett, which is in the middle of the ARC Regional Commission. All your outside counties are not in favor of this. It's going to be an interesting vote to see how that pans out.
What I'm going to say to that is that the Tea Party will have a talk on that in July. Is that not right?
Thank you.
July. And we're going to have some talks about that in July. And next month will be different. You see our, our flyers in there, but I think that T-splosh is a little bit confusing, and we'll be looking into that further in July. So you have another question? This is our last question, because then we have to have, I'm going to let you all say a final say, and then I have a few more questions of my own to end. Okay?
This one likes this question from Wendy. I want to know the changes that we can see in our budget to create better use of the county's money for water and jobs brought here. I want to know the difference in what the budget could afford to do. It's for Wesley.
The problem is, Mr. Jones has been late about turning the budget for the audits. The, the last budget that was actually audited was back in 2010. And the reason for that is they waited until May and the June of 2011 to turn the, the budget in.
Information, as you're speaking there.
The information you were speaking of, where did you get that?
I encourage everybody to attention to the, to online Georgia Department of Audits and look at the, the budget audit for Pickens County, Georgia from 2010. And with, with regard to the T-splosh, vote no. 75% of every dollar, 75% of every dollar Pickens County's taxed will go out of this county, and we will not get to see it back. If 60% of all 15 counties, other than the four largest counties, if, if Pickens, and votes no by 60%, and Polk, we get these counties. If, let me see. Dave Catuso, Whitfield, Murray, Fannin, Gilmore, Gordon, Walker, Shatuga, Floyd, Bartow, Polk, Harrelson, and Pauling. If, 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 if Pickens County votes no on T-splosh, along with all other counties in the region by 70%, but Whitfield, Bartow, Pauling, and Floyd vote yes by 60%, then the tax will still pass. And what's worse is Pickens will be able to opt out of this tax scheme. And that's what it is, it's a tax scheme. Vote no on T-splosh, and I direct your attention to the Georgia Department of Audits for the Pickens County Government 2010.
Okay. I, this T-splosh is a little tricky, so we need to learn about it before we go to the mailbox. So keep that in mind for July. I'm going to finish you up with, we're at the end here, so you all get a chance to sort of say one final thing, and then I'll have a few more questions. Okay, so go ahead, Marty.
Once again, just thank you so very much for being here, being so patient to listen to all of us. Several of us are not politicians. We haven't done this before, but we're trying. And we look forward to seeing you out in the next couple of months. If you see me out on the road, please stop by and talk some more. I'll be here after the meeting if you have any questions. And thank you to the Tea Party. Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, Marty.
There we go. The place against the Tea Party that was on, ladies and gentlemen, a very informative event. Different views. Like Bart said, we don't run on politicians. We're not, we're going to get there, we've got several of these to go. But there are a lot more of these forums to come to get more information. I'd like to say that honesty is what I'm all about. We have to be clear, we have to be precise, we have to be understanding, and we have to let people know what's going on in the forum in our newspaper and our website. Media will do that. This county has a lot going for it. Let's not change it, disturb it, but make it better. I'd like to see all y'all getting them up.
Thank you. Jerry?
I've been in 60 years in the west end of Pickens County, and I felt like it's my duty to offer myself to be a candidate for this position. It's been good to me, and my family, and all the people around there that I know. And I'm going there for my work. Thank you.
All right. Rob, go ahead.
Well, again, I, I want to thank y'all for inviting me here tonight. I know I'm the only one who's got a target on my back, and I bought my chicken jacket before I left. But anyway, that's what politics is about. If we can throw slings and arrows at each other, hopefully, we are blessed with the fact that, that the voters in Pickens County are more educated than what they were 20 years ago. Y'all know what the factors are. Y'all can bring it up on the computers, you've got that at your home. Please do your homework, know who you're voting for, and be diligent to the fact that the way it keeps us future politicians in line is if y'all be watching over our shelters. So thank y'all very much.
Okay, thank you. I know we are more educated than you, the Tea Party. All right, go ahead, Marty.
I would encourage you to do some online research, too. Mr. Jones's salary is not public record. I don't know why it is, but I, I would promise if I were to leave the commission, I would put a monthly budget in the Pickens progress that would list what, whatever dollars spent on for that month, not just yearly.
for that month, not just year. Go look at the Georgia Department of Audits online.
All right, thank you. Becky?
Thank you. I just vow to work hard and listen to the concerns of all citizens, and I will treat everyone as I would like to be treated with kindness and respect.
All right, Jerry?
I believe fiscal responsibility is the foremost part of duties of any provision of a county. Creating new jobs by attracting new industries is essential for prosperity. For all of us to attain that, we have to have infrastructure, and it has to be increased to attract new industry. If I'm elected to be the eastern commissioner, I will retire with me for that. I thank the Tea Party for inviting us tonight. I think it's great that we can get together and talk, and I appreciate everyone's support.
All right, here we go, we have some fun questions at the end here, so raise your arm when I ask you this question as a yes. Who here has run a business? Okay? Arms down. Who here has worked with government or in government? All right. Here who? Who here? Sorry. Who here pays the bills in their own household? You bring the money in, all right, your wife pays the bills, all right. How about who here has common sense? Now, would you stand if you, if you have an answer as yes to the following question? Who here loves Pickens County and is glad to live in this great nation of ours? Thank you. All right. We thank you candidates, we thank you people for showing up and listening to them, and NopeNews.com is always back there filming this, you can go online and read that, and I guess meet me in the turn. Thank you very much.